Good morning. If everyone will please take your seat, we'll get started. Okay. Well, again, good morning. This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand, we have Pastor David Smith from Oak Park Church on Solly Road, here to give the invocation today. He is Commissioner Dewitt's pastor, and we welcome you, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Thank you. May we bow our heads. Dear Lord, we come to you this morning with gratitude. We thank you for being a God who's with us now in this very room. And God, you never leave us or forsake us. And especially this morning, Lord, I thank you for these, your servants, our county commissioners. I give you thanks for the way they have chosen to serve the citizens of Mobile County. And God, we pray today that your kingdom would come in Mobile County as it is in heaven through your power, working in each of these servants. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage, to do what is right and to do what is good. And, Lord, today, we ask that we may put the interest of others above our own and act with love for the common good. We thank you again, Lord, for Commissioners Ludgood, Hudson, and Dewitt, our county staff, all of the leaders and those who work to make this place that we call home such a wonderful county. And I pray this prayer in the name of Jesus, whose perfect love and grace sets us free from all of our sins. Amen and amen.
It's good to see everyone. I know we have some special presentations to make, some grant presentations, which is always exciting, with our Love Your Community program. And at this time, I would like to invite Evelyn D'Angelo and Diane Martin, if you would come forward. I think Diane will be reading this morning. We have several categories of Love Your Community grant recipients, and I think Diane will tell us about those, and we'll make those presentations one right after the other. This is such an exciting program. It's a win-win for the community. You know, all these groups have worked very, very hard in removing litter and debris, and as a reward for that, they receive grant money when they reach certain thresholds, and that allows them to do public improvements, or improvements on public right-of-ways around neighborhoods and schools and businesses. And so that's why it is a win-win for our community. Y'all are doing a wonderful job, and I'll turn it over to you, Diane.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners Ludgood, Hudson, and Dewitt. We really appreciate the opportunity for Keep Mobile Beautiful to be married with Love Your Community and working hard to keep our whole county looking better. And that's what we're striving for, and these people have worked really hard, and I'm so proud of them. First of all, we've got for a $500 grant, the Coast Guard Aviation Training Center team, and they're gonna fund, which I think this is lovely, Veterans Resource Recovery Victory Garden. And that check will be payable. Oh, you don't need to know that. We've got Senior Chief Chad Wetzel and McComb. Thank you so much. I do not, 50 hours, that was the threshold. And Ms. Ludgood, that's gonna be placed in your district. Next, we have the Vets Team in Africa Town, and that's going to fund a storage facility and additional community supplies. And this project is with the Navy recruiters. They have been working so hard in Africa Town and doing wonderful, wonderful things. This is gonna enable them to do even more. Whoops, bring it down just a little. And we have another team that's got $1,000 for their grant. Their second grant. Yes, these are the Litter Ladies in Oakley. They're very active. Yes. They are working with NIST, which is a youth-oriented program, and they are going to do a butterfly garden with pollinators at the Strickland Youth Center. They hate litter. We all do. Next, we move to the $1,500 grant level, and we've got Team Lynch. And they are going to work at landscaping at Creole City Hall. So Creola is really gonna benefit from this. All right, next, we have the Navy recruiters team, and this fund is going to go to establish a community-access electric rechargeable lawn equipment. And they're in Africa Town, yes. And they are working to take care of people's yards that can't do it, or they're old or they have disabilities, and they're working so hard, and I'm so proud of them. Yes. They've got lawn mowers, blowers, and all have the same batteries, so they can work at recharging those batteries and rotating them around. It's gonna be a wonderful program for checkout in the community there. Next, we have Team Tanner Williams Historical Society. That's in District Two. Those funds are going to go to renovating the historical building and front porch and the entrance area of their historical building there in Tanner Williams. Next, we have up the Japanese Gardens Volunteer Team. That's in District Two. The funds are going to go toward a building enclosure, and it's gonna be decorated with a mural art by Riley. If you've seen the recycling mural there in the museum drive there, it's gonna be the same artist that's gonna do the mural for the Japanese garden. And we have Don Frye here. And then our final one is the Team Revitalize DIP. And those funds are gonna go toward landscaping community areas and planting flowers, shrubs, trees, to beautify the area and prevent future littering. We've got Elaine Galloway. They have had several really big cleanups, too. Thank you all so much.
Well, that was a great way to start the meeting off. Congratulations again to all the teams, and thank you so much for your hard work, and Do we have any speakers today?
Yes, ma'am, we have multiple speakers today. Mr. Lewis has signed in.
And I think I forgot to recognize Dr. Hannah Hart. Is that you, Dr. Hart? Okay. She's the president of Keep Mobile Beautiful. Glad to have you here today.
I see he's leaving, so I'm...
Almost didn't see you.
Our next, we have several speakers here on Agenda Item Number 38, and then we have, I mean, 48, 48. So do you want to take those in order? And we also have someone who would like to speak...
When you say several, how many do we have?
We have one, two, three on Agenda Item 48, Preliminary Platte. And we have one person who'd like to speak about a government plaza signs. So would you like the sign first or the neighborhood first?
As they're signed in.
Okay. So our first speaker is Mr. Aubrey Bishop, and he has signed in to address Agenda Item Number 48. And they've been instructed that they each have five minutes in there to state their name and address for the record.
Very good. Good morning.
Good morning all, and thank you for allowing me to be here to...
Absolutely.
...is to state my concerns for the upcoming development for Anglebrook, which is at McFarland and Cottage Hill. Left binders for y'all, so you can kind of follow along with me, and I'm gonna leave one with the administrator, so it can be placed on file. I basically want to go on record as opposing this subdivision as currently drawn. There are many issues that need to be addressed that have not been addressed, and I think the council needs to look at those and work on solutions before any attempt to approve this subdivision. The current one, I've asked and tried to get copies of a current water runoff study, with to include backwater modeling, because if you run two streams in together, you're gonna have a situation where, at some point, it's gonna back up, or all of it will back up. Where I live, at 8946 Cottage Hill Road, all of this water runoff runs right through my front yard, and it's been that way for years. When the subdivision Spring Grove was built in 2012, there was flooding in Quail Crossing, and if you look in the binder that I presented to you, the first tab, you'll see me standing The next picture is a lady in Quail Crossing, standing in the middle of the street. And the next one is Spring Grove, which is high and dry. You see very little water. Their water management plan worked perfectly for that subdivision. It did not consider the people who were downstream. That was in 2012. The next tab shows the climatological record for 2017. There again, the water was about the same for that particular day as it was in 2012, just a little bit different. And you can see my house again, my driveway, which is flooded. I cannot get out of my driveway. The culverts that are down on Cottage Hill Road, you can see how much water is trying to go through those six-inch pipes. There's two six-inch pipes. They were smaller. The county came back and enlarged those pipes to six feet, so there's two six-foot pipes. That is not the, in my opinion, not the appropriate way to move the water with a round pipe. The next one, picture, shows looking back toward Quail Crossing, and you can see how much flooding is there. And then the following picture shows Cottage Hill Road and how close that water is to going over Cottage Hill Road.
What year are those final pictures?
Pardon me?
Those last three pictures, what year were those?
They were in 2017. The climatological record will be right at that tab, would be the first thing past the second tab. And it shows you the water, the amount of water. There was also a climatological record on the first set of pictures for 2012, on that, right at that first tab. I may be getting a little bit... The next one, I was told that this recent, three weeks ago, that we just had an unusual amount of water in Mobile. It's okay, the climatological record for August 18th, 2022, was two inches. Water at that point ran over my driveway. It wasn't nearly as deep, but it did run over my driveway, and I could get out. And then some people suggested, oh, well, we just had a 100-year flood in 2012. Really? Well, let's look at the climatological records for the last 22 years, and that's the next sheet, and it shows you how much water, by month, Mobile has received. Mobile, if you don't know, is a wet city. Okay? So... And the last thing on my sheet is copies of the plat that was submitted to the county for approval, and it also shows the detention pond holding. Anglebrook has five detention ponds, all dumped together with one discharge point, which discharges directly into Cottage Woods Court, which will include flooding. Trust me, I've seen it. I've lived there for 45 years. I've watched a lot of this water and a lot of additions. You got Irongate, you got Spring Grove, you got Quail Crossing, and now you wanna add another one, Anglebrook, to dump water into the same place, which is right in my front yard. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you have a chance to look at the binder I presented to you.
I did have a question, Mr. Bishop. Are you saying that before the development of these subdivisions, prior to that, you did not experience this type of flooding situation?
No, ma'am, we did not.
And it got subsequently worse with each...
It's gotten worse over the years. And there's no studies done to see that. We approve subdivisions, and we look at the subdivision plan, and it shows the great water management, but nobody looks to see what the effect downhill's gonna be. Instead of trying to fix this on the back end, I would hope that you could fix it on the front end, just like the situation at Publix. It needed to be fixed on the back end, not on the front end, when they did their development and their parking lot flooded.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have one other, I have a question, Mr. Bishop.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I wanna make sure I'm understanding. The photographs that you've included, the most recent are from 2017?
Yes. You know, I don't have one past that time. I can just tell you, the most recent, which was a couple, three weeks ago, I didn't take pictures of it because it wasn't nearly as great as what these are, but I had approximately two or three inches running across my driveway. I could still get out and access, you know?
That was my question, I guess, 'cause we have had some recent flooding. Would you say that it's, there's been steps by the county to improve this situation since 2017?
I have not seen any. Okay. I hadn't seen them. In that binder, I did address two other things, and that's traffic, which is a huge problem in Cottage Hill Road, if you hadn't been out there, and also the demand that will be placed on public safety with the addition of more people out here. And it kind of explains it in my little cover letter, if you had, take time to read it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think we have two other speakers on that subject, and then we'll turn it over to Matthew, or Ricky, or Brian, or all of the above, to respond.
Our next person who's signed in is Ursula Godwin with Sawgrass Consulting. He says, he's consultant for Anglebrook. Five minutes, and state your name and address for the record.
Ursula Godwin, Sawgrass Consulting. Actually, if I could, wait until everybody else has asked questions or made comments, and I'd be happy to come back and answer any questions or address those, for the consultant. I'd hate to come up and then somebody else come, and I need to come back, or what have you.
I think that's acceptable.
Okay.
All right. So Mr. Charles Muse has signed up to speak on this item as well.
Good morning, Mr. Muse.
Good morning. Charles K. Muse. My address is 2255 Hartridge Way, that is in Quail Crossing subdivision. I am here representing Quail Crossing today to bring to light just a few things that we need considered in protection of our homes and our property. We have had an ongoing flood issues for many years. We have Irongate, which flows into the top part of our subdivision, under Dawes Road, with very inadequate drainage. They have a zero retention pond discharge under Dawes Road that comes directly to us. It has never been addressed in 15, 20 years that I know of. Also, uphill was approved for Spring Grove, and they were allowed to put in a zero retention pond with multiple 48-inch pipes, discharging directly into my back door, 'cause I am at the head of that. We have done many improvement projects through the years of cleaning that drainage area for those two sources to go through our neighborhood, and it discharges just adjacent to Mr. Buster Bishop's property there and goes under Cottage Hill Road. That is the furthest downhill point where all of these subdivisions discharge into one source. Our concerns is that any additional stress without major improvements to that area of Cottage Hill Road would put us back to where we were six, eight, 10 years ago, when we were having flooding of homes and property lost, in-ground pools lost because of backup flooding, and all of that area, so now has been cleared, and we have drainage leaving the properties. But as Mr. Bishop has stated before, I have stood before the council before, asking, there's studies being done and what was going to be done prior to Spring Grove, property being, that development being approved, and asked what the county was going to do to help protect us, 'cause we already had a drainage issue from the development of Irongate that wasn't addressed, and nothing at that point was done, and we suffered the consequences of it. So we definitely need and plead to the commission to look at this further. There needs to be, as Buster Bishop said, drainage studies of downhill property owners. If we continue to develop all this uphill property, we are going to cause further damage downstream. It's just, I mean, that's just the way that it is. So I just wanted to go on record of Quail Crossing's residents, our concerns, and plead with y'all to look at this further, please.
Certainly. Thank you.
Mr. Godwin?
Thank you. So I'll do my best to try to address all the, I was trying to take a few notes, and address the issues. Seems like the biggest question here this morning is related to the stormwater runoff. Maybe some of it is what's generated, or, you know, would potentially be generated from Anglebrook or this piece of property, and then it sounds like there may be some issues with some adjacent subdivisions as well, in terms of when they were approved and what the stormwater requirements were at the time of those approvals. In terms of Anglebrook, I think some of the issues that probably are seen in adjacent property owners here is that currently, obviously, that property's not developed, and so there is no stormwater management. There's nothing in place on the property today that helps slow down or control stormwater runoff, so I would imagine some of these property owners are seeing some water from this property now that's just uncontrolled, because it's in a natural state, and so they may find where it, you know, consolidates in a single location, or drains through their property, or what have you. In terms of Anglebrook, when, obviously, if we're approved and move forward with construction, we'll have to make sure that we meet all the county's stormwater requirements, which does require detention. There's, you know, a pretty significant pond that's gonna be, you know, constructed on the site, and the water will be controlled in terms of the discharge. So going from its current state of just woods today, and the water kind of goes where it goes, it will be collected and stored and released in a manner to not provide, and to not allow for a negative impact downstream. So I think there could be some resolve to some of the issues, just in the fact that we're gonna have detention ponds in place that meet county regulations and so forth to help with that. As far as some of the other subdivisions there, I can't really speak to those. I'm, you know, I'm not sure how those subdivisions were designed. I know that we have to take into consideration off-site stormwater that comes on our property, and we've gotta deal with that as well. You know, if it's something that's not draining to our side, unfortunately, I can't elaborate on, you know, what those impacts are. But as far as our side, as far as Anglebrook goes, you know, we will make double sure that we're, obviously, we're in compliance with the county's regulations. We work really close with staff, and, you know, they do a fantastic job in terms of their reviews and questions and comments to us about how the system works. And so I feel quite certain that, you know, we would be able to help in some of those situations out there. But I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have, or...
Did I make sure I understand? What you're saying is you believe, as, and I'm not asking for an opinion, a professional opinion, I guess, you're an engineer, that you may reduce with your detention the amount of water that's flowing into the, is that what I understood?
So I think what would potentially happen there is the fact, like I said, with it being undeveloped today, there's nothing to help slow the water down, or control it, or, you know, manage it. With constructing detention ponds and stormwater management, you know, we will be able to control that. I can't speak to how much of that actually affects one of these owners or the next, but as far as our side goes, I think there would be some, you know, there would be some change out there for the better.
Mr. Bishop, will... Mr. Bishop will entertain. You have a question?
I'd like to ask him a question, since he brought this up, that he was going to limit the impact to the area, because they're going to have these detention ponds, they're going to catch the runoff, and there's no way to catch that runoff now. I'm not talking about that part of it. What I'm talking about is when you get it and you release it, what you're going to do is it's going to run on the north side of Cottage Hill Road, which runs right down in front of my house, and then you're going to have several streams that come together, and then you're going to have some backwater modeling, which will force the water more backwards, which will increase the flooding to certain areas. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, we'll let, we'll let Mr. Godwin respond to that, if you can.
Okay. For our side, obviously, we, you know, we have to have a release of the, of the detention pond, which water currently drains right now towards Cottage Hill Road, just like the gentleman said. So, we can't redirect stormwater and say, send it in some opposite direction, or some, you know, so, but we can't control how it's released.
Understood. You're, you're following regulations. I think that, probably, Matthew Barcliff, he looks prepared to speak, he can shed some further light on the response to your question. Okay.
And in fact, I believe I sent Mr. Bishop the preliminary drainage study that they, eighty pages or so, he's had an opportunity to look at it. With the MS-4, when it came into play, the detention requirements were increased.
And when was MS-4?
Well, our most recent adoption of MS-4 upgrades to our requirements was in 2017.
And that was dealing with stormwater runoff and how it's handled?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Federal regulations?
Federal regulations, right up through the state. So, I don't know if Mr. Bishop was able to look at the report closely enough, but the initial plan, the preliminary plan, is, so you have a ten-year storm, a twenty-five-year storm, a fifty-year storm, and a one-hundred-year storm. The plan is to detain all the increase due to one-hundred-year storm, and only release it at what the pre-developed ten-year storm radius. So, ten years is kind of what, a standard for what we use for our roadside drainage. And so by reducing the, after, the post-construction runoff from a one percent chance event, which is the hundred year, then it will prevent the need, or prevent the cause of any backwater, because it's being released at a pre-developed ten-year rate.
And how, how do you release it at a slower rate? Do they have to take, build in certain measures?
So, there are three to five ponds that extend the entire southern boundary, basically, of this development. And so, there will be a choke point where it will only allow so much water out of that release point of control structure, if you will, and at that point, it will control, and only a certain amount of water will be released.
And so this was a requirement that came into being in 2017, that did not, was not there before, when these other developments were built? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And I will note that we didn't have administrative control over subdivisions-
Right.
-until 2018, when the city rolled back their planning-
When they released it to us, right.
So, they had, they had the control over the approval of subdivisions up until that point.
Okay. I think what the, I think what these homeowners, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Muse, and others are looking for is a sense of confidence that this development is not going to make a, an existing problem worse. And I think that, if, if they can get some sort of guarantee that that is the case, then I think that that would allay a lot of their concerns. So, does, does the MS-4 rules that have to be complied with now, will they do that?
I hesitate, there are no guarantees in life.
Well, that's true.
And, and I can't stand here and make a guarantee that there's never going to be a problem-
In your professional opinion, will it, will it alleviate their concerns?
In my professional opinion, it should reduce any concerns they have.
Matthew, Ma, hold on, guys.
Please, 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 please respect the decorum of the meeting. Do not speak from the audience.
Matthew, I have a question about control over subdivisions, and I'm going to ask Jay. We've been here before, we've had this conversation. What, what really control do we have over this? I mean, really? If they, and I guess I'm asking Matthew, Brian, and Jay, if these subdivisions come, and, and I'm going to repeat myself here again, because I do this almost every time we have this issue. What real control do we really have if they meet state, county, state, and federal regulations? My understanding from every time we've had this conversation, in Mobile County, we have very little control over denying these, these developers the right to develop these subdivisions. Am I correct with that? All right, well, I'm going to say what I always say. The same thing that goes back to something that Mr. Bishop said. When do we get to critical mass? I've said that before. Our schools are overcrowded. They're building a subdivision in the school districts of the two largest schools in the state of Alabama. Baker High School is the largest enrolled, the second-largest enrolled high school in the state of Alabama, only second to Hoover High School. Causey Middle School is the largest enrolled middle school in the entire state of Alabama. Beyond that, we work in a volunteer fire department in that area that we're talking about building the subdivision, so we're stressing our volunteers, not even a paid fire department, but we're stressing our volunteers. And then I understand Mr. Bishop's other concern. We're stressing all of our public services, and particularly, public safety, when we continue to build subdivisions. And I said all that to say this, and, and the reason I ask those questions is because I've been here before. We've, we've had others with the same concerns that you guys have. And ultimately, and I want one of them to say it out loud, I see a lot of head nodding, but I want one of them to say it out loud. What kind of control do we really have over approving or disapproving these subdivisions, as long as they meet county, state, and federal regulations?
Jay, could you give us the, your legal opinion, or Brian, or both of you?
I'm on the Brian comment. Commissioners, there's state statutes that states that if a developer meets all of the county's criteria, that the county engineer has no option other than to recommend approval by the county commission. We just need, and we do, we ensure that those criteria are met.
Right. The criteria are met, and you rec, you've recommended it for approval to the county commission. Now, what, I guess, yardstick can the county commission use to decide whether to approve it going forward at this point? I mean, is, is there liability if we don't approve what has they, requirements, when the requirements have been met?
Commissioner, we have dramatically increased the drainage criteria. As of the MS-4 in 2017, our new criteria requires the stipulations that Mr. Barcliff stated, that they should see a significant improvement out there in West Mobile with the criteria that is being utilized, our subdivision-
So, it may not be, it may not be completely perfect, but it should be improved over the condition that it's in now? Is that what you're saying?
It should actually be an improvement over undeveloped property. So, if, if they meet all of that criteria, Commissioner, we are obligated to approve that redevelopment.
And I said all that so you guys understand the position that we're put in, in Mobile County, particularly with no home rule and no zoning requirements. And so, I, I knew the answer, and I know that we've spoken on the phone numerous times, Mr. Bishop, and I hope you understand the position that the county is in, and I, and I hope that, and again, I think I've told you numerous times on the phone, I'm not an engineer. I do spend a lot of time in our new subdivisions and on our road developments, and I, and I'll say this, one hundred percent, I trust the, the people that work for the county on our staff, including Brian and Matthew, that they'll stay on top of this and make sure that they're meeting and, and providing them with everything that they need to provide them with, to make sure that they are in compliance.
Okay.
Hundred-year plan, I said 2012 had three-point-three inches, and five years later, they had three-point-two in the flooding. So, I don't know what the hundred-year amount of rainfall is, but I know in a five-year period, you had almost exactly the same.
Well, when you talk about a hundred-year, you have to also take into consider, consideration as, two or three weeks back, I mean, we had, I want to say, three inches of rain about, and, okay, two inches of rain several days in a week, but I get the average overall of a hundred-year rainfall, but I, anyway.
It might be helpful, Matthew, if you would meet with Mr. Bishop and, and go over the specifics of the MS-4 requirements, and, and as Brian said, and you said, how actually the collection and routing of this runoff might actually help the situation that they're in. So, if, if that be the case, Mr. Bishop, I'm just going to ask you to, to meet with, with Matthew after the meeting, if you would, please. Okay?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll finish up with one, one other comment, please.
Sure.
Again, the, the concern that you guys have is my concern, but I also have other concerns when it comes to public safety, and when it comes to infrastructure, and when it comes to educating our children.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, that was handed another sheet on item number forty-eight. It's Mr. Richard Whitman. So, Mr. Whitman, I'm not sure if you-
Was Mr. Whitman signed in?
He did, but it was handed to me after the meeting. It was starting, I apologize.
Good morning, Mr. Whitman.
I'm Richard Whitman, and my address is 2430 Cottage Woods Court. I just came here to try to express my support for Mr. Bishop, and to speak for maybe some of the people on Cottage Woods Court, because the water that's going to be released, is going to be released into my backyard. And I know everybody thinks we're all a bunch of nervous Nellies, but when the Publix sub, development was done, there were issues in our court with drainage initially, and we called and complained, and, you know, they were, they were eventually addressed, but we're obviously very nervous, so.
Understood. And I, and I certainly, I think, you know, your concerns are certainly legitimate, based on your previous experiences. I, I think based on what Matthew has told us this morning, as, as well as Brian, that the new federal regulations on discharge hopefully have dramatically changed that picture. I know in, in most residential neighborhoods, speaking as someone who's, who's built a house recently, it certainly has. MS-4 rules have changed everything, so I, I totally understand, and I think it would be helpful if perhaps you would meet with Matthew after the meeting as well.
Right. Because it's just, it's just not Mr. Bishop's issue, his kind of court-
I understand. And it's, and, and we, certainly, your, all of your concerns and those pictures, very legitimate, very legitimate concerns, but I think, hopefully, in, in speaking with Matthew and understanding the new process, that's the requirements, that can help allay some of that concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, we have Mr. Gwen Howard, and he would like to speak about sign holding outside of Government Plaza. I'm thirty-five minutes.
Good morning.
I was just six thirteen-year hard drive, Mobile, Alabama.
I was just, a while back, I was, y'all had sent the police out there and told me I couldn't hold signs more on the front, on the right, where I always do, and I've been doing them for years, the mayor's and everybody, but-
Mr. Howard, you-
I thought as long as you brought them and took them, everything was okay.
You are, I know you've been holding flags, American flags out there, you are more, certainly more than welcome. I think there may have been some issue with the political signs that were stuck in the ground in the front, and they weren't on your, you weren't holding them or on your person, and with, I, I think that may have been an issue. When signs are left unattended, then they-
I stick them right beside me, and I hold the flag. That's generally what I do. But I thought that was part of my personal rights to do that.
Well, if, if, if there was a misunderstanding about the signs being stuck in the ground, and, and you were at some ways away, and they weren't part of, there with you, or on your person, then we, we do apologize, but I think that that was, that was a concern.
Well, I appreciate it, thank you.
Certainly.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what happened. What kind of signs were they?
They was, uh, political signs, uh- Just different people that I support, and if I wanted to get somebody out of office, I would bring theirs and say, put an X on it or something. Whatever I want to bring, that should be up to me, I thought. I mean, they bring it up here to get Ben Reynolds out of the office, and they just lay them out there. So, what's the difference?
I think that there, there was definitely concern, there's always concern. When you were holding the sign, and, and a person is there with the sign, and it's either a, a demonstration, or you're walking around with it, that's one thing, you're expressing your rights, but when signs are left laying up against, or they're stuck in the ground, and, and there's nobody with the sign, or if they're leaning up against a chair, then, then, you know, it can be considered litter.
Well, I'm guilty-
So, if it's, but if it's with you, and it's obviously that it is, then certainly you have every right to hold it.
I'm guilty one time for laying them out during the election week, but I won't do that anymore. I know Mobile don't let, the order says you can't leave them out anyway. So, I've, I learned that from Bill Rich.
But if there was a misunderstanding, Mr. Howard, we do apologize.
Oh, ain't no misunderstanding.
And we, and we want to see you back out there.
Well, I'll be out there every day if I ain't got something else for my grandchildren, son.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your patriotism.
No more speakers, Sam.
Okay.
Could we take number forty-eight out of order?
Okay. You're asking to take it out of order?
Yeah, can we?
Yeah.
So that they can be, so that they can be dismissed if they would like to leave, so they don't have to stay for the entire meeting?
Uh, could we take number forty-eight out of order?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's go ahead and dispense of that one.
Number forty-eight, approve preliminary plat only of Engelwood, Engelbrook, the Fallen Road and Cottage Hill Road. This is a conditional approval subject to the completion of any warranted improvements to Cottage Hill Road, as determined by a traffic impact and signalization study prior to final approval and acceptance by Mobile County.
No.
So moved. Second.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August eighth, 2022, and August twenty-second, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, accept a sub-grant award from Alabama Law Enforcement Agency under fiscal year 2021 Homeland Security Grant Program for Operations, Stone Garden, any amount of $100,000 for the Mobile County office, there is no local match.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, any amount of $7,200 from District One funds for its reading initiative program.
So, so moved.
I'm sorry, did, would you, Glenn, I'm sorry, would you read that again?
Yes, sir. Number four, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, any amount of $7,200 from District One funds for its reading initiative program.
So moved. My second.
It's passed.
Number five, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School- Number five, approve appropriation contract with Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in a total amount of seven thousand four twenty-seven oh five to be divided as follows, to be used for its coral department.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve sponsorship agreement with Our Sisters Closet, Inc., in a total amount of one thousand dollars to be divided as follows for its purse with purpose fundraiser.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve professional services agreement with O'Neil Publishing, any amount of six thousand from District One funds to provide digital platform management and consultation services.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve sponsorship agreement with Sims Women's Club, Inc., any amount of five hundred dollars from District Two funds to be used for its Sims Christmas Tour and Shop Hop event.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve appropriation contract with Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, any amount of seven thousand eight sixty-three sixty-two from District One funds to be used for its coral department.
So moved.
Second.
Number ten, consider taking the follow- following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
Number eleven, approve renewal of O'Neil Software Annual Support for Government Plaza Car Key Access System for a two-year term for Electronics Department. The cost of renewal is twelve thousand five twelve.
So moved.
Second.
Number twelve, approve change order number one with ten deal construction for Mobile County Parking Garage Stair Repair. If implemented, the change will decrease the contract by ten thousand dollars. The new total contract will be one hundred and thirty-three four seventy-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirteen, approve recommendation of Mobile County Board of Health to exempt the listed organizations for a one-year exemption from paying food and lodging fees for the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number fourteen, adopt a resolution authorizing a request of probate court to dispose of certain items from the fixed asset inventory lists.
So moved.
Second.
Number fifteen, approve agreement with SMG and the City of Mobile on behalf of probate court for rental of the Mobile Civic Center East Exhibit Area four oh one Civic Center Drive, Mobile, Alabama, to hold poll wo- poll worker training for the twenty twenty-two election cycle for the following dates.
So moved.
Second.
Number sixteen, approve a warning agreement with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, Inc., for roof maintenance or replacement for various county facilities. This amendment will increase the contract by one hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred to provide for a comprehensive leak investigation of the South Tower at Government Plaza, which will increase the total amount to three hundred and seventy-six thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Number seventeen, approve assignment to WAS Design, Inc., for Government Plaza Pocket Park for design, bidding, and project administration associated with the development of a park between Government Plaza and Government Plaza Annex. Proposed fee is one hundred one thousand one ten.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me. Number eighteen, approve assignment to Architect Group, Inc., for West Mobile County Park Playground Splash Path for bidding and project administration associated with the construction of a new playground and splash pad. The proposed fee is ninety-one thousand one forty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Number nineteen, approve assignment to PH and J Architects, Inc., for equipment upgrades to Metro Jail Sewer System for design, bidding, and project administration associated with the development of debris extraction system. The proposed fee is ninety-four thousand two fifty.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty, approve amendment, assignment, and consent to the assignment of professional services agreement by Dr. James R. Stephory to Stephory Psychological Consulting Services, LLC for the James T. Strickland Youth Center.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-one, approve psychological assessment consulting agreement with Stephory Psychological Consulting Services, LLC to train, oversee, and support evaluation activities of master's level staff for James T. Strickland Youth Center for a term of one year at a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour from the general fund.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-two, approve partial release from release and servitude recorded in the office of Judge Probate at Real Property Book sixty-five zero seven, page seventeen oh four, of certain lots shown on the plat of Burke Four Subdivision, recorded in MAP Book one twenty-one, page seventy-eight, less and accept all drainage easements and common areas shown on said plat, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute the par- uh, partial release on behalf of the county.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-three, approve order form, general terms and conditions with Fifth Asset, Inc., doing business as debt book for use of its debt and lease agreement software as a service application, where initial term of one year at an annual cost of eight thousand seven fifty.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, authorize right of entry with the Student Conservation Association slash the Nature Conservancy, Conservancy to allow golf course team members to assist in maintaining Mobile County conservation lands during the fiscal year twenty twenty-three at no cost to the county.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-five, approve service agreement with Greer Enterprise, LLC for disposal of regulated medical waste for James T. Strickland Youth Center for a term of one year at a cost of eighty-five dollars per trps container.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-six, approve professional service agreement with Peter Rosten for the provision of computer networking and IT services at James T. Strickland Youth Center for a term of one year for the annual cost of eighty-four thousand to be paid from detention subsidy funds.
So moved. So moved.
Second. Of staying.
Twenty-seven, approve contract amendment number six to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Moffett and Nickel, Inc., dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, to add task six, additional services for Cedar Point Fishing Pier.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-eight, authorize amending the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Grant Application for a first responder safe room to increase total budget to four million one hundred one thousand six hundred and one with a ten percent match, and authorize the Commission President to execute all associated documents.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-nine was voted at the conference. Number thirty, approve contract with Thompson Consulting, LLC to provide disaster debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-one, approve a memorandum of agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for removal and disposal of debris along state maintained roadways.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve a change order number two for Project Escataba Hollow Park in Campground Improvement Phase One A. Change will increase the contract by twenty-seven thousand four fifteen eighty and increase contract by one twenty-one working, by a hundred and twenty-one working days due to the impacts from weather events and supply chain delays.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-three, approve contract with the City of Creola, any amount of eighty-seven thousand seven thirty-five from District One funds to be used to purchase tasers and virtual body cam starter.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirty-four was voted at the conference. Thirty-five, approve renewal of Nemo dash Q Annual Equipment Warranty and Software License, COVID dash nineteen, under the current purchasing cooperative Omnia Partners dash IT Solutions Contract, any amount of seventeen thousand five eighty-five for the revenue commission.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-six, approve renewal of Leeds Online Power Plus Investigation System Service Package, any amount of twelve thousand eight twenty-two for the sheriff's office.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-seven, approve amendment, Mobile County Commission American Rescue Plan Act Strategic Spending Plan, approved August first, twenty twenty-two, to add slash revise the following projects for funding.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-eight, approve amendment to fiscal year twenty twenty-two general fund budget as follows. This budget amendment is to remove the amounts budgeted in the general fund for district initiatives utilizing ARPA Revenue Loss Funding. The expenditures will be tracked in ARPA Revenue Loss Fund. This adjustment reduces the amount of the general fund revenue and expenditures by seven million five hundred thousand, resulting in an adjusted general fund budget totaling one hundred and sixty-three million six hundred and seventeen thousand twenty.
Good job on getting those numbers out.
Better than Eddie.
Better than Eddie did Thursday.
I practiced.
He's not here. I shouldn't pick on him. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thirty-nine, approve any amount of one million from District Two funds for the design and construction of the Mobile County Soccer Complex.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty, approve appropriation contract with the Friends of Pritchard Public Library, any amount of fourteen thousand from District One funds to replace damaged flooring and other items related to the library operations, subject to the submission of required documents.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty-one, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right of way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-two, adopt a resolution consenting to the annexation of a proportion of the following public streets, Snow Road North, Summit Drive East, Ward's Lane, Bloody, uh, Circle North, bounded by territories annexed by the City of Sims pursuant to the city ordinance's.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-three, approve reimbursable agreement of the relocation of utility facilities on private and public right of way with Alabama Power Company, um, for McDavid Road, grade, drain, base, and pay estimate cost to Mobile County is seventy-seven thousand seven oh seven.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty-four, approve right of way and/or easement agreement for track seven, any amount of two thousand three sixteen for Project Turnover Road West, grade, drain, base, and pay.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty-five, approve right of way and/or easement agreement for track two, any amount of six hundred and forty dollars for Project Monroe Lane, grade, drain, base, and pay.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-six, approve right of way and/or easement agreement for track six, any amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for Project Holly Point Drive South, Sheffield Road and Wilson Road, grade, drain, base, and pay.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-seven, approve right of way and/or easement agreement for tracks twenty-three and twenty-four, any amount of nine thousand for Project Holly Point Drive South, Sheffield Road, and Wilson Road, grade, drain, base, and pay.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-eight was a, was approved. Forty-nine, approve preliminary and final plat of Resubdivision of South Pole Forty-three Industrial Park and preliminary and final plat of Resub of Lots Three and Four, Haba Temple Subdivision, and preliminary and final plat of Shin Road Estates, and preliminary and final plat of Pritchard Corner, and preliminary and final plat of Ward Acres Subdivision, and preliminary and final plat of Penny Lakes West.
So moved.
Second.
Number fifty, approve supplemental agreement number one with John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc., Project Glass Road for alternative pay item to replace an item that is difficult to procure due to supply chain issues. There is no net increase, increase to the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-one, approve agreement with the University of South Alabama on behalf of its Coastal Weather Research Center to provide weather forecasting and warning services for the period of September first, twenty twenty-two through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, an amount of four thousand two hundred.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-two, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segments of roads, and subdivision streets.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-three, approve the functional reclassification of the following roads as listed below.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-four, approve final plat of Penny Lakes and accept road right of ways, right of way as shown on the subdivision plat for the following streets, Penny Lake Drive, then leave court, and accept the roads in the subdivision for the maintenance by Mobile County together with drainage systems as affects said roads and accept warrant TD for the right of ways indicated on the plat.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-five, approve a memorandum of understanding with Gwen's commercial printing for preparation and mailing of voter postcards relating to the twenty twenty-two general election to each active registered voter in Mobile County for their proposal, any amount of sixteen thousand nine forty-seven fifty-three for probate court.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-six, approve assigning Mont McDonald the contract to perform professional engineering services for project roadway improvements to Calioke, Oka Road, College Park, from Sheldon Beach Road northward to Pritchard City Limits. Current funding allocated is one hundred fifty-nine thousand nine eighty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner, we have add-ons. First add-on is approve request of probate court to advertise through radio, television, and print for post tech workers for the twenty twenty-two general election, an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand, to be paid from probate court election budget.
So moved.
Second.
Next out, add-on, approve the Public Works Department to construct a new driveway entrance into the parking lot at the Metro Jail. The estimated cost of this proposed work is approximately nineteen thousand three hundred and three thirteen, of which the cost of materials is one thousand four forty thirty, will be charged to the project GFP oh twenty-three, and the cost of labor and equipment, seventeen thousand eight sixty-two eighty-three, will be charged to project CDP dash three twenty-two dash twenty-two.
I have a, a comment about this. Uh, I was not aware until this morning when Ricky Mitchell, our Public Works Director, came to, to deliver this and, uh, we were discussing the critical need situation of the driveway, uh, at Metro. And I, I was not aware until we discussed it, uh, that that was the, was a problem right now. And, uh, he was explaining that, uh, we were gonna use county public works, uh, employees to, uh, to construct that driveway entrance. And if, and he was actually pulling, uh, some workers off of some other projects, which I, I certainly understand. I mean, it's a matter of priorities here. But I think that, uh, it, that it doesn't need to come, you don't need to be paying for it out of your district funds if it, the, the jail serves the whole county.
I understand. And, and really because of the critical need, I was just willing to do that.
Well, I, well, I under- I understand that. But, uh, I think that, uh, in, in discussing this with, with Ricky, and Ricky, you wanna kind of repeat our conversation this morning about, uh, if the need arises when these workers go back to the other jobs, that, uh, that may require some overtime and that may increase the cost. But, uh, as long as we're aware of that, I, I won't put, put words in your mouth.
Yes, ma'am. So, to do these special projects like this, we have to pull our crews that are doing other work in order, in order to take them over here and do these special type projects. Uh, we're willing to do that, but, you know, with the, with the understanding that we have to go back and get what we were do- doing before that we pulled them off of. And we do these projects during regular working hours, and sometimes we may have to, in order to get the other projects done, we may have to work some overtime. And just with the Commission's understanding that we may overrun our overtime dollar amount in order to get these projects done, um, just wanted to make sure they understood that. And with that, with the knowledge of that, that we could just charge the materials for this project to the DFP instead of, you know, charging everything.
And, and not cha- charge the labor costs with CD, CDP. Uh, however, in the event that overtime is needed, uh, then we'll make that notation that that's acceptable overtime because of the critical need of this project was required. Okay, so, uh-
Okay. So, as far as, I, I, I'm not sure what the vote is gonna be, but as far as I'm concerned, this is a project that ought to be paid entirely from the general fund and whatever adjustments we have to make. We make them at that time.
And, and that's what I was discussing with Ricky. Apparently, there's some sort of accounting issues of, uh, from one project to the, to the next. It's not, it's not nearly that simple, apparently.
Right. Right. Th- this project will be performed mostly during working hours. And so when we go back to perform the work on it, on whatever road we may take these crew from- to perform the work on a, on whatever road we may take these crew from, they may have to work overtime on that project, and, uh, it's just difficult to charge that overtime from another project to the jail. So that's why, I just wanted to make sure that the Commission was aware that we may have an overage in our overtime line item that-
But you're right.
-that just needs to be taken into account.
And that's, and that's kind of what I'm saying, too.
Right.
That we can reduce, retake that, delete that from a CDP, and, uh, and as far as the labor and equipment, I mean, as far as the materials, I'm sorry, uh, which, which project is that being charged to?
The, basically, it would just be the cost of fourteen hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents will be charged to project GFP zero two three, which is the Metro Jail.
So typically, we would charge the whole thing to GFP. I have enough confidence in our finance department that when we get to overtime or whatever the issue is, they'll figure out which cost center it ought to come from. Nobody's going to not be able to be paid that overtime. You're not going to not be able to get a project done because you can't charge overtime.
Right.
So this whole thing ought to be GFP.
Understood. And here lately, this last year, we have been not charging labor and equipment. We've only been charging materials for GFP, CDP, EFP, but the Commissioner asked me to do this, and he was, he said, I'll pay for your labor and equipment, so we, we've, uh, we put that on there as, as requested, but we will, uh, not charge that.
On this particular project, I mean, there are instances when, when, you know, if there's additional labor that we need to-
Right.
-cover, that our district can do that, but I think in this particular case, because it's Metro Jail, I, I, I think that it could-
Charge the overtime. And I don't disagree with any of that, other than I was, it was such a critical need and, uh, just to keep down-
Well, you got it on there.
Any, any troubles. I just said, look, let's get it, I think-
There, there's no-
And really to say you-
There's no trouble. There are nuances when it comes to this. The jail is not one of those.
Right.
Well, we, you know, they, we had a situation where during the constru, on the construction at the Metro, uh, right now, there was some issues with the parking lot that had to be shut down, and then people are parking all over the street. There was an incident, an emergency situation at, at the jail where an ambulance and a fire truck did not access an area they needed to get to. So that's why it all come up, and that's why this all happened so quick.
Well, I, I know there's a level of comfort with you, having been a Sheriff's Deputy, but-
I didn't want to say that, dude.
But the sheriff or the warden or any, any of the folks over there are more than welcome to contact our offices as well as the administration, and that way you don't have to feel like you're, you're put, you know, in a, in a corner to get this done, because I think we could have handled that way to start with.
I didn't feel like I was put in a corner, like I said, I just, I didn't mind, but, uh, thank you.
Okay, so with all of that said-
So moved.
We will, uh, we will approve this, uh, amended to delete the CDP portion of the fund, and it's been approved.
Well, I guess, hold on, we're going to, we're going to change it also to come out of general, correct? Well, we're going to do that?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Okay.
Sorry?
We're, we're deleting the, the portion of labor and equipment from the CDP project and changing that to the general fund.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Did you, did you say so moved?
I did.
Did I say second?
You did.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So moved, second. We're good.
Thank you, Commissioners. And, um, next add-on will be approve project number EFP dash three forty dash twenty-two to repair the parking lot at Grand Bay Middle School. The estimated material cost is ninety-one dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
There's ninety-one dollars, is that correct?
I didn't do the estimate on that.
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's, that's the material cost, just asphalt, just patching the bottom.
It must not be much work.
It's just patching the bottom.
Oh, okay. All righty. Thank you.
And fifty-
Okay.
And fifty-seven. Commission announcements and/or comments.[1781.86]